Okay, alright. We are gonna go ahead and get started because we have people that are in and join us in our session. Thank you for those of you who have joined us. We're going to get started with our session very shortly. Nothing ever short of just a few technical difficulties. Abigail, just give me a text or a heads up when you know you're when you're able to present. We're gonna do introductions first. And then from there, we can go ahead and have your presentation done and go through those things, okay? So for all of you that are here, good evening. I want to make sure we are recording a session. Okay, alright, so I wanted to make sure that everyone's on. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 2022 Info Session for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. This evening, we are joined by our Board Chair Liaison for Baltimore City Public Schools and two current sitting Board Commissioners. I mean, they're gonna introduce themselves. It'll be hosted by myself. I am the Chief of Policy and Partnerships for the Mayor's Office of Children and Families Success. And the objective for tonight is really for all of us to go ahead and get just a general purpose and things in order of what it is that we do as Board, what the Board does. If you have any outstanding questions, or there's so many questions about what does it mean to be a Board Commissioner? The type of work and the things that are done behind the scenes that we might not know about. So this gives all opportunity to learn about the application process, what it means to be a Board Commissioner, and just kind of get a little bit of behind the scenes information from our two current sitting Board Commissioners. And our Board Chair is gonna answer a whole lot of questions because we had some that came in earlier. So we're just kind of looking forward to getting all those questions answered and having candidates apply and feel a little bit more informed about what they're going to be getting themselves into. So we're going to start with our Board Chair and then we can go ahead to, I mean, our Board Liaison. And then we're gonna go ahead and go to our Commissioners.
Actually, I'll let them go first. I got a, I got a, you know, chain of command. So y'all two go first and I will go after.
No problem. That works. Commissioner Chinia.
Yes, well then, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Linda Chinia. I am currently a Commissioner on the School Board. I was appointed during the time when it was a joint appointment by the Mayor and the Governor.
Commissioner Brooks.
Commissioner Brooks is showing as muted. Let me see something. Oh. You're not able to unmute. Okay.
Okay, let's see if we can, well, let's see if we can quickly resolve that. Alright, Commissioner Brooks, are you able now? Okay.
Yes, hi, everybody. My name is Commissioner Brooks. This is my third year as a School Board Commissioner. I was appointed and just reappointed for my next three years' term and super excited to serve the Children and Families of Baltimore City and looking forward to fielding questions and being as honest and transparent about the process as much as I can. So thank you all so much for the time.
Awesome.
Hey, my name is Christian Gant. I serve as Board Executive Officer. I echo Darrell. Also, just enjoy being in this role, able to serve the Children and Families of Baltimore City. So I've been with City Schools since 2018. And this is Commissioner Chinia and I's third one, I think. I think we're the, so me and Linda have been pushing through with these information sessions.
Awesome, awesome. Okay. Well, then, between Dr. Darrell Brooks and Commissioner Linda Chinia, we should be getting some really good information. But we're going to start really with an overview of the process first. Sort of give folks an understanding of the process and just some background information first. And then hopefully, after that, after everything's sort of presented, after we've sort of talked about the overview of being a Board Commissioner, what all those things mean, how to be a part of the process, and the differences, obviously, between appointments or being voted and onto the Commission. Then we can take questions from there and then we can just have a quick Q and A. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and start with the presentation. We're able to...
Am I presenting first or you're gonna present first?
Oh, you, I was gonna let you do it.
Okay, I just need someone to, I can send the PDF. I just need someone to either share the PDF or I can send the PowerPoint. But I just need someone to click for me if one of you don't mind.
Is that what Abigail already has?
Yes.
Perfect, we're ready. Thank you.
Okay, ready, I'm ready when you are.
Okay, awesome. Good afternoon. I'm going, my name is Christian Gant and I serve as Board Executive Officer for Baltimore City Public Schools. I'm gonna briefly present on the Board, the roles and responsibilities of the School Board and kind of hopefully help fill in some of the duties of the role. Next slide, please. So the Board has full authority and jurisdiction over all educational matters in Baltimore City. And its primary responsibility is really the governance of the district. Many of the roles and responsibilities are outlined in statute in the City-State Partnership, in addition to the agreed-upon provisions of the CEO's contract. I'm going to touch on some of these and go into further details on others further into the presentation. So setting the vision, mission, strategic priorities and goals for the district. I believe vision and mission are straightforward. But in regards to strategic priorities, these are the priorities that will guide the district's work over the next four years. I will go, excuse me, five years. I will go into more detail about the priorities and goals further into the presentation. Hiring and evaluating the CEO. Again, only the Board has the sole authority of hiring and evaluation of our CEO. Adopting and overseeing the annual budget. In addition, just the role of adopting the budget and voting on it, the Board also receives detailed reports throughout the year on the district finances in addition to the public budget presentations that are presented by staff in Board meetings. Approved District Curriculum. Curriculum comes on a six-year cycle and the Board approves a different subject area each year. And this year's cycle is math and fine arts. Approving bargaining unit contracts. So the CEO's contract designates her as the, he, him, her, you know, whoever the CEO is, as the Board's chief negotiator, which is pretty standard across the Board for large urban school districts. Our practice has been that the CEO informs the Board when negotiations are happening, keeps the Board informed on the status, and seeks feedback on significant policy shift proposals. I will also reemphasize, though, that only the Board can approve any final bargaining unit contracts. Appointing certificated personnel and senior staff. So all certificated personnel, and in example, I'm referring to, for example, teachers or principals, and senior staff, such as the Chief Financial Officer or Chief Academic Officer, must be approved by the Board. The CEO is responsible for the vetting and nominating of applicants. Adopt and advocate for a legislative platform in the General Assembly Session. So the Board annually adopts a legislative platform around December, which guides the priorities of our staff in the upcoming General Assembly Session. More often than not, the Board Chair is asked to testify, but sometimes other Board members also testify in Annapolis. And I would also add that the Board, through staff and also, and of course, as an entity, played a key role in legislation such as 21st Century or the recent Corwin. So lots of involvement from the Board, you know, on the, in our general, in Annapolis. Deciding appeals or final decisions from the CEO. So the, any final decision of the CEO, such as, for example, an extended student suspension or an employee nonrenewal, can be appealed to the Board. We can be appealed, which the Board can then affirm, modify, or reject the CEO's recommendation. And the final three, I'm gonna list them, but I'll just discuss them in further details. However, they are holding the district accountable for meeting goals, seeking and hearing the community's voice in decision-making, and adopting policies and regulations to govern the district and guide staff work. The Board is roughly similar to Congress or a legislative branch, which, when you think of a legislative branch, you think of policymaking, budgeting, strategic planning, and placing topics of conversation on the agenda for question, discussion, similar to like a congressional hearing. The CEO and district administration are roughly similar to, say, the executive branch. Their responsibility is to implement the policies passed by the Board. So if, for example, the Board were set a goal of, you know, a reading growth goal over the next three years, it would be up for the CEO to figure out what personnel, curriculum, procedures, and supports are needed to make that goal a reality. Next slide, please. So a little bit of history of the Board. Prior to 1997, City Schools was a part of Baltimore City Government and functioned as a Department of the City of Baltimore, kind of similar to how we would think of the Baltimore, say, DOT. As of now, though, after 1997 and the legislation passed then, it is now its own agency as all other school districts and states are. So the City-State Partnership was created by, was created via legislation in 1997, creating a new School Board that at the time was jointly appointed by the Mayor and the Governor. And in that legislation, the purpose of this new Board was twofold. First, raising the level of academic achievement of the students and, of the students in the Baltimore City Public School System and improving the management and administration of the school system in Baltimore City. Legislation passed in 2017, removed the Governor's role, and is now the Mayor of Baltimore's sole responsibility. Next slide, please. So the current makeup of the Board is nine appointed members and one student member. Come in December, there's, you know, there's currently an election now, and two elected Board members will be joining the Board, increasing the total, increasing the total number to 12. And I'll also add that Board members appointed and elected serve at large. We are not a school district that is made, that is set, excuse me, split into districts. But all Commissioners are expected to represent this interest of the entire city. So appointed members have a three-year term and they're eligible to be reappointed and serve an additional two, three years. And elected members will have a four-year terms and as, there are no term limits on the elected members. Our Student Commissioner serves a one-year term and may be elected to serve an additional one-year term. And currently, again, before the two, before the two elected members come on, but at least five Board members must be in attendance to make a decision. And at least five Board members must agree with anything to make a decision. But I'll add that if the Student Commit, the Student Commissioner has limited rights, does not have the full rights, so if there's a vote, a policy vote that they can participate in, the quorum will be six, so. Next slide, please. So the new, the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners is unique in that the appointed members must fit into these slots, which I'm gonna go over. And again, this only applies to the appointed members. So four Board members must have business administration expertise. Three Board members must possess a high level of knowledge and expertise concerning education. One Board member must be a parent of an enrolled Baltimore City Public School student at the time of the appointment. And one Board member wants to also possess knowledge or experience in the education of children with disabilities. And that education or experience can derive from being a parent and also be, can also be derived from being the parent of a child with a disability. Additionally, Board members can fulfill, one person can fulfill multiple slots. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of a snapshot of the current Board makeup, including Commissioner Coy, who was sworn in last week, and our current Chair and Vice Chair are Johnat Richardson and Ronald McFadden, respectively. And also listed are the various committees that the Board members are, that the Board members participate in. Next slide, please. So governance versus management. As I mentioned before, a School Board's job is to govern. And what that means is transforming the needs, wishes, and desires of the community into policies that direct the community's, community's schools. Management of the district is the CEO's responsibility. And the CEO is responsible for the day-to-day operations. So included in this slide is kind of some examples of what is, you know, what are the, what is the difference between governance and management? For example, you know, why it's the CEO's responsibility and staff to develop, you know, the policy language and et cetera, but it's the Board's job, again, to review, evaluate, and see how it's going. But again, it's the CEO's job to develop it. So the Board's job focuses really on monitoring and oversight, establishing goals and ensuring that, and ensuring accountability that the goals are met. And the Board's, again, role is also to decide the what and the direction, whereas the CEO's, the CEO's role is to figure out the how in meeting the goals. Next slide, please. So I want to expand a bit on the Board's role in strategic planning. And these are the seven priorities that the Board has adopted through the 2026-2027 school year. So these priorities, again, are, you know, what the district's kind of focus is, you know, during this period. And next slide, please. So related to that are the district goals. So the strategic priorities and then the district goals fall underneath the priorities. So the district goals are how the Board will be measuring the success of the priorities. So the Board has set a goal of taking the amount of students that read on grade level from our current baseline of 19% to 40% by 2026-2027. Also, the wholeness score, which is students feeling connected and supported in their schools. The goal is to raise that baseline from 61% to 80. And then finally, the graduation rate, the goal is to increase that from 69% to 76. Next slide, please. So what is policy? Policy are the Board's written principles to govern City Schools. It's the Board's vision in action and provides structure for the day-to-day operations of the district and continuity from school to school. Attached to most policies are administrative regulations with more specific direction as to how to implement the policy. The Board's policies are currently listed on our website and cover a wide variety of areas, including instruction, staff relations, and school board governance. And also, most of our policies have an annual compliance report requirement attached, which reports letting the public, the Board and the public know if the policy is working as intended, also filling in data around the policies, and these are also available online. Finally, policy is not set in stone. So if the current Board decides it wants to change something that the past Board did, it can at its discretion, again, provided there is a majority of the Board that wants to do that. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna review the policy development and review process briefly. So the process formally starts when the Board approves the Policy Committee Calendar at the Board's Annual Business Meeting, which is due in the summer. And I'll, so then, the proposed policy is then developed and presented to the Board's Policy Committee for feedback. And after that presentation, the proposed policy is, remains online for public, for public feedback for a minimum of 30 days. The next step is called first reader. After staff incorporates the feedback from the Board and the community, the revised policy is then presented to the full Board for feedback. And then similar to Policy Committee, after the, after first reader, if there is feedback or changes, staff takes that feedback and incorporates it into a new draft. And the final step is typically second reader. And that's also when the Board votes on the policy. And at times, if necessary, the Board has gone a third reader, you know, for policies that just needed more engagement or development. But most of our policies are voted on, on, at second reader. Next slide, please. So one question that frequently comes up is how does the Board hold the district accountable? And I'm gonna walk through the various methods. And again, I'll caution, some of this information will overlap with the previous slides regarding role. So Board Participation Dialogue and Questions during Staff Presentations on Educational Operational Matters. So again, what I'm really referring to is this conversation and dialogue during the Board's meetings and the questions, you know, around the various topics. And really, these, this dialogue does help shape the Board's decision-making and policymaking. Consideration of Community Feedback, Public Comment, and Other Forms of Communication During the Decision-Making Process. Again, the community feedback and public comment are extremely important in the policymaking process. And I have observed many times directly where, you know, where community feedback has been invaluable in highlighting something that wasn't initially included. So that is, you know, very important and typically always, you know, included or at least addressed. Oversight and Annual Evaluation of the CEO. So again, the Board is solely responsible for the oversight and annual evaluation. In addition, the CEO has to submit annual goals each year for the system that the CEO has then evaluated on at the end of the school year. Management of the duties of the Office of Maternal Audits as defined in Policy EAA. So City Schools has an internal auditing department that reports directly to the Board. And the Board directs and decides which areas of district operations are being audited each year. And then the CEO and management are then held accountable for acting on the audit recommendations. So fiscal oversight. How's the Board ensure that funds are being spent in a proper way? And there are several ways. First, so the Board does receive detailed balance sheets on a regular basis. Any proposed spending over $50,000 is vetted by a Board Committee and then the full Board for approval. And at times, the Board has amended or denied spending proposals. Audits, again, both internal and external. And again, they also, again, the Board has the final approval of the budget. I also note that there, the district has other fiscal policy controls available that are also online. Next slide, please. So the funding of an annual external audit of the district's finances. So as I mentioned, in addition to internal audit, the district is also annually evaluated by external auditors. And currently, the Board, you know, the Board's budget is responsible for funding that external audit. The auditors also meet directly with the Board Chair to discuss their findings with the public, as well as the Board's internal, as well as the Board's Audit Committee. It's policy-setting duties and review of policy compliance reports detailing the implementation effectiveness of district policies. As I mentioned, policy is really how the Board governs. And in those compliance reports, which, again, detail the effectiveness, are also a tool for the Board to know, you know, is this policy working as we intended it? Monitoring of collective bargaining negotiations and providing feedback to the CEO on proposed changes. And then finally, oversight and follow-up on the reports of the District's Ethics Panel. So the District's Ethics Panel is primarily supported by the Board Office and like the, like internal audit, kind of lives underneath the Board. The Board receives all advisory opinions and complaints on a quarterly basis. And then the Board, the CEO or the Board are responsible for ensuring appropriate enforcement actions taken in response to the panel's findings. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna review the different types of Board meetings that are held. And again, this is how the Board gets his business done. So public Board meetings are generally held twice a month at 5:00 PM. And public comment is permitted at these meetings. In addition to some of our recognized groups that have a standing slot at every, every meeting, there are 10 slots of three minutes each available for public comment. Closed meetings, so the Board meets in a closed meeting before the public meeting called Executive Session. And in that session, they discuss personnel items, since those can't be deliberated or discussed in public. As they also review the appeals and hearings items in detail. Ethics panels, opinions, and complaints, any legal issues. CEO updates on district, on district administration that matters. And at times, that Board members have used as space for professional development. Policy cannot be discussed in Executive Session due to the Open Meetings Act, which means that while the Board and the CEO can discuss how things are going presently in the past, any discussion of policy changes or looking to the future and discussing that has to be discussed at a public meeting. So Board Forums and Hearings are used for the Board to hear from members of the public on a particular topic. Board Hearings are when the Board would like to listen to members of the public. And Board Forums are more interactive and there's an opportunity for members of the public to engage in dialogue with the Board. And I will add that the Board is holding five community conversations, which are also Board Forums and the, by geography, by, excuse me, by geography. So, you know, there will be one in northeast, northwest, south, et cetera. And that information is gonna be released and also posted on our website. So for those of you listening, and there will be opportunities this year if you would like to have a direct conversation and, you know, back and forth with Board members. So special meetings, these are, in a nutshell, kind of like public meetings that are outside the regularly scheduled, right, right outside of the regularly scheduled meetings. Typically, though, public meetings are not as, the agenda is not as full as a regular meeting and typically is just there to address one item. Board Work Sessions, so when the Board would like to dive deeper on a particular topic, they have, you know, they can hold a meeting with the staff, where the Board kind of present, you know, the staff kind of presents on what they're thinking or policy and then the Board kind of engages in the back and forth with the staff and with each other. So really, when, like I said, the Board wants to really, needs more time outside of, you know, existing meetings to dig, dig deeper on a topic of interest. And finally, the Board Committees. The Board has three standing public committees, which I'm gonna discuss in more detail. And public comment is permitted at all three of these public committees, and there are five slots. Next slide, please. So as for the three standing public committees, and additionally, the Board has established ad hoc committees for specific purposes. So the Operations Committee meets every third Tuesday of every month at 10:30. And staff provides updates in that committee on mainly non-instructional school matters, such as the district budget, school construction, or transportation. Teaching and Learning meets the first Tuesday of every month at 3:30. And that committee is, as you can imagine, heavily focused on academics and how our students are doing. Updates are provided on such topics, including grading, English language learners, and English and math supports and strategies. The Policy Committee, which meets every third Tuesday at 3:30, is for the Board, is for the members of the Board and members, the Board and members of the public to, one, see, be able to have an opportunity to see policies before they are approved and for the Board to review and provide feedback. Next slide, please. So Board Docs is the system that we use to manage the Board Agenda, Policies, and Current and Past Meetings. And, you know, when I refer to the website, that is referring to most of our, you know, most information is housed there. So there is a link on this PowerPoint, which has also been shared. So that link is, will take you directly to Board Docs. And I'll also add that meeting agendas and materials are published early, typically five days before any meeting, to give the public a chance to review the documents. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna touch on the community engagement that the Board engages in. As I said, public comment is available at our public Board meetings and public, public committee meetings. The Board Hearings and Forums. And again, below is just an example of some past, past and current hearings that are held, such as the Board's Budget Hearing, which is held in the fall and the spring, to give the community a chance to weigh in on budget priorities. Or the Legislative Board Forum, which is to give the community a chance to provide feedback on the Board's legislative platform for the upcoming year. District Events, so the Board routinely attends and participates in district events, such as, for example, the New Teacher Institute. Stakeholder Engagement, the Board regularly holds meetings with stakeholder groups, including the Baltimore Teachers Union, the Parent Community Advisory Board, and the Associate Student Congress of Baltimore City. Individual Correspondence is definitely very important. You know, the Board gets a lot of letters and direct emails from constituents. And really, I've just seen this directly, that these letters do shape Commissioner Questions. They spurred action by the Board and staff upon receiving these. So again, it does, you know, it does make a difference and it does help shape policy. And then finally, you know, the Board is available, in addition to the physical Board Office, its central office. We are, we can be contacted at board@bcps.k12.md.us with any questions or concerns. So and also, as a Board Office staff, when we do receive a concern, we always have to make sure that it's addressed. So, and also, as a board office staff, when we do receive a concern, we always have to make sure that it's addressed. And we do collaborate with the CEO to ensure that there's follow-up. So that concludes my presentation. Oh, sorry, next slide. So that concludes my presentation, and thank you. If there's any questions, if not, thank you.
Hi, thank you so much. I don't think I got a chance. We were just trying to get started in the beginning to introduce myself. I am Jamie Johnson. I work under Ms. Noel as the city's, I'm sorry, as the Mayor's Office of Children, Family, Success, Youth and Community Engagement Manager. All of this information was super resourceful and, you know, thank you for sharing and being so detailed with some of the information. I just, I had a few questions just in general. So one, just to start from the end of the presentation, and people, because they email us all the time. So when people reach out to the board email address, who is actually receiving and monitoring those emails? Is it like collectively, does everybody in the board receive them? Or do you guys have one particular person that navigates that and gets it to the director, to the executive officer of the board? How does that work?
Well, board office staff monitor, yep, yes.
Okay, perfect. And they just kind of go out to whomever they're navigated to? Okay, good. And then?
Well, let me, let me add some context. It also depends. So if I get a letter that is like a general concern, and it's like, dear Baltimore City Boarders Commissioners, what I'll do is I will include it in the board's weekly update, because that's feedback. But if it's a sensitive concern, like, hey, something is broken, or I'm unhappy, that's when we work with the CEO's office to get it resolved. So but all, of course, we are responsible for addressing or sharing or answering all the correspondence that we receive.
Okay, perfect. That's, that's good information, just for context in our, in our comms team when we get, you know, anything that may cross-promote across, you know, our agencies. And so, and then like, I, I love the slide about like the events and how you guys are engaged. So when you guys have like district events, do you guys utilize the, or like any events that the board is affiliated with? Do you guys just utilize the standard public school platform and kind of blast it out that way? Or does the board actually have its own way of promoting and navigating this event separate from the entire school district?
Well, we're all, I mean, I would say we're, we're all one school district. So, yeah, you know, the, our, the district's communications staff is responsible for also, you know, helping to promote board events. So we rely on the district's communications staff for that. Although we do have, we did, we did recently hire a specialist who works half of her time directly with the board and half with the staff. So there is some more capacity building around that.
Okay, good. I see Ms. Linda shaking her head, like, yeah, so you guys have someone else on board to actually assist with that? So I see that happening. And I think, let's see here, I took another. And so all of your, the board documents are all available, like the public knowledge documents, they're all available just going through the website. So if anybody wants to see them, they can just go to the link that you guys provided to see all of the documents, right?
Yep. So at Board Docs, you can see every agenda for the past probably like five years, I believe. It goes five years back, all the agendas, all the different various meeting presentations and things that are uploaded. I'm sure Noel can appreciate that, working with us previously. All that stuff, as well as also on there, there is, of course, the, all the policies are listed. And like I said, previously mentioned, the compliance reports, starting last year, are now publicly posted in the library. So anybody can access those compliance reports and ask any questions. Yep.
Okay, good. That was kind of that.
I had a question that kind of came in, and this was, it's a lot, and this is right before I wanted to get to like our part of sharing information. But to our commissioners currently sitting there are, it seems to be a lot of information that you should be somewhat familiar with, or that you should sort of just know your way around before you apply to a position like this. So for people, for folks who are considering being a board commissioner, what, what would be maybe like some tips that you would give someone to consider before they start getting into this? Let's just say I'm not really well-versed, super much in education. I've gone to school, yes. Maybe my, my children are in public school, absolutely. But to get sort of into this part of it or this layer of it, what would be some tips for people who like are well-intentioned, I'm really thinking about it, but it seems like it's a lot of things for me to learn? What would you kind of advise someone to do if they were like, I really want to do this, but seems like a lot, I don't really know where to start? And we, and I can pay, either, I would love to hear both of your feedback on, on how you guys got started in that, or just a tip to give somebody who's considering.
Good question, Noel. That was something Abigail asked on this, and she was like, well, how do people get started? How do they get involved? And you just said that. So, yeah, good question. Thank you.
Dr. Brooks, if you don't mind, I'll start. Let you, you, you pick up, okay? I'm, I'm the unusual one that I worked in the system for many years, so that it's an interesting question. I would say, honestly, the very first thing is an interest in city, Baltimore City and city schools. Because you're never going to know everything. And in fact, we do have a very comprehensive onboarding process for folks who join the board, and some of us who've been on for almost six years continuously learn new things. So I think if, if, if your interest is in helping to, to move the direction of schools, to, to work for children, to support families, I would tell you to perhaps take a look at Board Docs, look at some of those things from, from the past. But don't let the lack of knowledge stop you if you really feel that this is something you want to do. You will have an opportunity to meet with the chiefs and staff and learn those different things. And being a part of committees will help you to learn. But we also do continuous educational activities for board members as well.
Yeah, I was, I was actually going to piggyback off of that. In addition to the, as Commissioner Chinia mentioned, in addition to the resources, the district resources, you know, there are also external resources. So the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, they provide a lot of training and support for board members. They have training throughout the year, and we do offer that free of charge. We also, the board office also sponsors travel and professional development for board members, specifically around the National School Board Association. There's an annual conference with lots of opportunities to learn things, as well as the Q Council of Urban Boards of Education Conference. So in addition to additional resources, I wanted to highlight, as Commissioner Chinia said, we do also support external ways for commissioners to learn more as well.
That is awesome, yep.
Oh, thank you so much.
No, Dr. Brooks, I'm sorry. I think Dr. Brooks.
Yeah. So I, my only addition would be that I think one of the most important things that anybody interested in serving on the board can do is that they have to be really clear about their why, and also their strengths, right? Because you can't be everything to everyone, but if you know what you can uniquely bring to the board, to the children and family of Baltimore City, and you can do that with a level of clarity and authenticity, I think we can make up for all the additional knowledge pieces that we might need through the things that Christian and former Chair Emeritus Chinia sort of just talked about. It is that if you can begin to understand the ways in which your lived experience, maybe growing up in Baltimore City or going through public schools, and then being able to leverage that with whatever content expertise you might be bringing to the space, I think you can actually serve by using your voice and your unique contribution to the space. So don't try to be like anybody else on the board, but your unique contribution also requires that you know your gifts and your skills and your strengths in the world.
I love that. I love that your unique contribution is, is super important. Because we want to encourage people to really be in it and like to apply and not feel like, oh, well, I'm not able to or because I haven't, I don't have this looking sort of looked resume, or I don't have that sort of lived experience. Like that actually, you are probably more so a reflection of our children, our communities, their families, and then maybe other folks who, you know, so we want to make sure that we have, we represent the gamut, which is a very large, you know, a very big, small city with a lot of small neighborhoods, with the little neighborhoods, and a lot of different representations. So all of our 77,000-plus children, you know, represent all of those things. So you, to have a commissioner on the board that represents pieces of those things, and then collectively have a board that comes together that is a representation of that, is, is, is really key to me, is what I would feel like would really be beneficial. I'm going to hand it back to Jamie. You said you had another question that came in.
Actually, that was good, because I was going to say like, how do you guys, once they come in, like, should they, you know, state their purpose? And then you guys decide like what their role is, but you just kind of, Dr. Brooks kind of just took me exactly to where I was going with it. And so I just have two last things. So one, I love that you guys have committees within the board, right? So that's super awesome. Like that, that was really good. And so, and so you guys list when those particular individual committees meet? Do you guys like list those dates on, like keep those dates public knowledge? Perfect. Okay, good. I love that.
I want to, yeah, I want to, the, the co-committee, people don't understand, that's a whole nother layer of the memberships. I really want to get into the, those co-commissions that, those subcommittees that you have that you all chair or that you all are a part of, and the importance of those, those as well. And I'll hand it back over to you, Commissioner Chinia and Commissioner Dr. Brooks.
Yes.
I would, I would say that the bulk of the work actually happens in those committee meetings. Because that is the time when commissioners meet directly with staff other than the CEO, but, but hers, you know, the, the staff that's really working on developing and implementing the policies, and can find out interim reports in terms of things that are happening and have, and also bring feedback. That's a time devoted to usually one or two items. So, you know, it's, it's a two-hour meeting, but it's really an intense meeting. And it's also a time where the public can, can also be a part of it. I currently serve on the Teaching and Learning Committee. So, you know, we get really steeped into what happens with, with instruction. What, you know, what, what, what is going to be revised in the curriculum? Because as, as Christian mentioned, there's a six-year cycle. And so we're looking at renewing different, at least two curricular areas every year. We also look to see what impact has, has the work we've been doing have on student achievement. So every time we're looking at something, we're looking to see, so what has that meant in terms of, of meeting those priorities around students being able to read better and do math better and what the graduation rate is? So I, I, I really enjoy those sessions. I know, and I don't, I'm going to let Dr. Brooks talk more, because he's, he was really great with the Policy Committee. But I will say, we attempt to have board members rotate among those committees, because that is one way that we begin to, to really hone in on our own skills and learn new ones and get a, and really get a good comprehensive picture of all that the board does.
Yeah, and I don't have too much more to add. I think one, just can't echo enough that those spaces, those committees are where we start doing our learning, right? So I not only choose to be on the Policy Committee, because, yeah, I know policy, I can read policy, but I didn't know what policy meant in the context of Baltimore City. And so it was great to be able to shadow the former Policies Chair to see how thorough and meticulous she was, so that I could do that when I took over as the chair, and I just recently finished my term as the chair, then I knew the level of depth and riches that I needed to bring to that space. And so for me, that whole first year was learning. What it looked like, how to do it, how to navigate that space. And so now I've moved over to Teaching and Learning Committee, again, where I do have some content expertise, right? But I'm still, I'm also learning about sort of more pragmatic pieces. And my last point that I'd make there is that those are also space, well, we, you know, so we govern, but when we're looking at compliance reports and looking at the data, we're getting an opportunity to weigh in, in some really important ways around whether or not the interventions that we're using are actually working. And granted, we not be, we might not be able to shift it at that particular moment. We might sort of wait till the next round, and when we're doing evaluations writ large. But those spaces become both eye-opening, as well as informative to help us figure out like what's next and which, which strategies we should be advocating for, that we believe is going to better serve the children of Baltimore.
I love that. I love that you said, like, collecting data and measurements to really determine what your outcomes are. I think that's, I think that's our world today. Like if we would use data, data-driven information, we would be a lot more successful in all of our lanes. And so last but not least, when I, you guys are talking about the committee. So like here, when I was running the BCAP Board, Board Meetings, right? So we have them quarterly every four months. We were required a part of our guidelines and policy that they were public forums. So like during the pandemic and things of that nature, we were, I was using WebEx to broadcast live, of course, and then the YouTube function, so that it could just air live as we, of course, nobody ever really attend those, attends those meetings. But are you guys required to make your meetings public? Meaning like if I wanted to just view from an outside entity and just sit in without speaking, can the public view those meetings when you guys meet as a board?
You mean, which, you mean all the board, board meetings in general?
Yeah, because like for the city, like for MLCFS, our board meetings are required to be public. So like every time we have a board meeting, I have to make sure we're set up on WebEx, and I provide that information, and we're on YouTube live. So are you guys, do you guys, are you guys held to that same requirement?
Yeah, so the board, again, the board, they can meet in closed session, but again, it is very limited. You know, the Maryland Open Meetings Act, there's only certain exceptions and things that the board can talk about.
Yes, that's what it is, Maryland Meetings Act. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, Open Meetings Act. So, yeah, the board is subject to the Open Meetings Act. And I just also want to reiterate, I don't know if I said that earlier, but again, the board legally cannot make any final decisions in private. So they have, any final decision on policy, budget, it has to be made in public. They cannot make decisions in private.
Nice. And is that information, are they, are they archived on your website, just like your meeting agendas? Or kind of you, you just have like meeting?
As well as YouTube, which Christian Brooks mentioned. So, yeah, our, the past meetings are uploaded to YouTube, and on Board Docs also are all the meeting transcripts and as well as the links to the presentations.
Okay, good. I'll get my popcorn tonight. I can't wait to check it out. I'm going to pop down your YouTube tonight. Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to add that, you know, one, one of our committee chairs at our public meetings sometimes even says to folks, if you go back and look at the committee meeting at this point in the tape, this is where you'll find such and such information. So, yes, they are, they are archived and very useful.
Thank you. They will be for us, definitely. Thank you. I'll pass it over to Chief.
So I have, oh, I have, I have one, I have like three questions that came through. So the first one, and I would love to hear from every, everyone about this, is how much time does it, is, does it take to do these things? And I think we can say that, what is basically, what is the time commitment? The people want to know, outside of the, the, your personal life, this is not, and I want to continue to underscore, because folks have been like, is this like a paid thing? It is not. You do not, it is not, it's not paid. It's not an additional job, but it can feel like one, I feel like, from time to time, right? So I just want people, I also think it is super important to be realistic about expectations and managing them. So please tell me, how do you organize your week? How do you organize your month? And then like, just as a human being, a person, just how do you, like, how did you say, okay, this week I'm going to do this, but as a mother, I have time to do this? But as a, a wife, a boyfriend, a grandmother, anything like, but as, as also a professional, how do you get all of these things done and still, you know, have that lived, real-time commitment? Be up on your policies, information, people who ask questions, parents who might, you know, be a little upset about things, transition in leadership through school, concerns, all the things that sort of happen? I would love to hear like what that real-time commitment like looks like as a person who is, as my friend likes to tell me, multi-hyphenated. You're not just one thing and one person. You're not just a, a board commissioner. You are a lot of things. But you want to show up as your best self in that, in that right as well. So just please, tell me like, what, what is the time commitment? What does that look like in real life?
You want me to go first? Oh, what, that was, I'm glad you asked that, because one of the things that Mr. Gann had asked us to consider was, you know, like, what we thought qualities were for an effective commissioner. And my first thing was, I wrote, was time management. I will say it does take time. It is a commitment. It is a great deal of, of reading that is involved, of, 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 of listening that is involved, of interaction with other folks. So if you're an introvert like I am, sometimes that feels like, you know, you've just got a plan for it to happen. I actually started on the board when I was still full-time working. And what I did at that time, I had a very great boss who allowed me to use Tuesday as my full flex day. And so I, I just plotted out to whether, you know, whether I had morning meetings. And so I, I just plotted out to whether I, you know, whether I had morning meetings or not, just to take that time. But I also just planned out time in the evenings when I know I'm going to, you know, read some things that I need to do pertaining to my role on the board. Um, we are constantly texting and emailing, um, each other. Uh, one of the perks we did get was that we, we, you know, we get devices so we can stay in touch with each other. But it is a commitment, um, um, like anything else. But I, but I feel that if, for most things that we're committed to, that we say we really want to do, we find the time to do it. Um, so, but I, but I'm not gonna, you know, I have to say it, it is a bit of time, but it's good time. It's time, it's well worth it.
Yeah, and I can, you know, I think for me, so I am a, um, I, when I started on the board, I was working a traditional job. I had a, a nine to five, um, but I was also a faculty member, which gave me a little bit of flexibility to be able to be a board member. However, I'm a, I now own my own business. And so every time, every dollar, um, every hour that I spend doing something that is not a billable hour, I do not receive payment. So for me, that's one of my biggest sacrifices. So every hour that I'm on a school board call or doing something during the week, I don't get paid. Nobody's coming for me. No one's giving me vacation or sick leave. So for me, like, that's one of my biggest sacrifices that I make, partly because I grew up here. I went through, um, elementary, middle and high school in Baltimore City. And so for me, it feels worth it. In terms of managing time, I will tell you when I first started, I was easily doing maybe fifteen to twenty hours a week. That was unsustainable. Um, and so over the last year, um, especially given COVID, finding, um, a balance, not trying to do everything, trying to be more strategic with my time, um, how I'm reading things. After a while, you actually get in the flow. You, you start anticipating the types of things that might be coming up in the readings or, um, while we're doing the work. Um, and so, um, so there's ways to kind of like shortcut it. But what I've also been clear about, like, I'm not going to also, um, sort of self, like, I run myself down. Because we are, we have, I have a husband, I have a family, have a business, um, I have all these things going on. Um, and so in order for me to be effective in my role, I also need to be resourcing my own emotional wellness, uh, and my physical wellness too. And so I can't let any of those things, even as doing such great work and important work as a board, um, take me to sort of like, uh, burn my own body out in the process. And so I think it's about trying to find your own way of being a great contribution, um, in any way that you define it, uh, while also sort of maintaining the integrity, uh, of, of the position. Um, and I think some of that will take time and then you'll have to decipher yourself, um, what that is. Uh, so, yeah, so those are, those are my, I think I'm in a more u- a unique position. Like, um, you know, a lot of folks are retired or, um, they have a few folks who are working. But like now I work for myself. And so every, literally every hour, I don't work, I don't get paid.
I was gonna add to that, what they both said, um, one advantage of the board structure, right? With the different slots is, um, commissioners are also able to kind of lean on the expertise of their colleagues. Right? Because you have to have some business people. You have to have some teaching, you know, some education folks on, you know, on the board. So I just wanted to add to the time management piece, that is a way of, you know, saving time is knowing, well, I'm a great budget operation person and saying I'm gonna focus on, you know, I'm gonna kind of focus on that and trust my colleagues who are in the education space, which doesn't mean you don't ask questions, but just adding to the time management piece, the, the, the slots can be an asset to that.
I appreciate that. I, I think that that type of honesty and transparency is really, really important. Oh, look, oh, look, we have a, we have a junior commissioner.
I thought, I, I thought I would give an example of, um, uh, splitting my time. I, uh, when, when I'm not doing board work, I'm, I'm full-time grandmom daycare. So sorry about that, but he'll stay quiet.
Oh, no, we're not, we're not, we're not sorry. Listen, the, the junior commissioner can come right on and, and, and enjoy and, um, do those things, uh, right here with us. So, um, welcome and hello, sir. Thank you. Um, but I think that just to that point, it is, it really is important to be honest about what it really takes and like the time requirements and also, you know, being thoughtful about your mental health and what's important to you. Um, and our executive director, Dr. Brooks, um, said she loves it. She, um, you know, Dr. Brooks, our executive director, she has six grandchildren in Baltimore City Public Schools. So, and she does not play about her family and she makes that very clear and, um, the work that, that gets done. So we are, are also, you know, the mindset of how you have to be multi-hyphenated in, in doing this work, um, being a public servant, um, but also showing up for the people in your lives and in your families is super important. Um, we have one, another question that, um, came in and then we can switch over in a, in a moment, um, from someone, they said, what did you do to prepare for your board interview? Super great question because we know that there is a process that you have to go through. Um, and if folks who have, um, engaged in the platform online and have sort of seen the questions that are asked, you do know that there is the interview process. We're gonna talk about that in a moment after we ask something like one more question. Um, and we'll just kind of go over the overview. But what did you do to prepare for an interview like this? This is, it's not a job, job. It's not like you're, you know, again, it's not maybe like something you studied in undergrad where you know the things and you might know the people, but this might be a little different. So I would love to hear, um, from both, um, Commissioner Chinia, Dr. Brooks, how you did that. And then also, I don't know, um, Christian, if you could give the people maybe a few hints or maybe something that they could do, a little pointers, a little, it's a little slide side for the, for the people who need a little bit of motivation, taking, taking notes tonight.
Yeah, well, I can, I can jump in. I, let's change, Chatrin, you wanted to, uh, you, you want to go first? Go ahead.
I'm gonna let you go first because mine was so long ago. I'm gonna, it was a different, different model. So I'll let you go first with the newer model, but I'll talk about the one.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, so, you know, for me, um, you know, I spent a, a lot of time thinking about, um, sort of that initial application process. And so before that, before I became a, a school board commissioner, I also participated in a, um, a boards and commissioner, uh, leadership development program. And so in that program, they talked about sort of, um, they prepped you on like interview, um, like what, how you should be thinking about this work and showing up, helping you clarify your why, um, in order, so when it, the time came around for me to be an actual, um, to apply for the commissionership, um, uh, position. Um, basically I approached it very similar to some other interviews. I thought about clearly like stating, you know, what I believe my contribution was to the space. Um, I named, um, sort of how my relationship to navigating, um, as a young person throughout Baltimore uh, allows me to bring multiple levels. So I get to bring my lived experience overlaid with my academic expertise um, and just my general, um, sense of, I think, uh, social justice orientation to the work. So I was very clear going into my interview space that, like, I believe in social justice and I think we need it. I, we need trauma-informed healing, we need trauma-informed care, we need restorative justice practices. So for me, um, I knew that the, some of the community members who would be there would also like, that's how they orient to the work too. And so, um, you know, I was a little terrified when I actually got to the meeting and it was like thirty people in a room, um, and all of them asking questions, um, but I felt prepared because I was very clear about my why. And whether or not I got appointed, I, I believe that how I showed up and what I advocated for in that space would make, um, me feel good even if I wasn't selected for the position.
Okay, um, I think I, I, I got, I had a slight, it sounded as though I went out for a while, so I hope I'm still okay now. But, uh, my, the, when I originally went on the board, the process was a little different in that the interview process was both, uh, within the city as well as at the state level. So it was, uh, it was really, um, uh, simpler in terms of my preparation. Again, I, I have to say that, uh, with a person who, uh, went to city schools and then worked in Baltimore City my whole career and, um, retired from city schools, it was, it, it, the perspective was a little different in that I was still able to share really, uh, sort of the philosophies and the hopes and dreams that I had, uh, in each one of those particular times in my life. And so I was just very honest about, um, being able to, to tell folks my beliefs in, in what education should be like, what I think every child in Baltimore City deserves, uh, what I felt about the role of parents. Uh, and, and again, that came from my experience as being a teacher and wanting parents to be there as partners. Uh, what I felt about the greater partners in the community and I, and I really, uh, uh, segmented each of that so that I was able to talk about those at each of those, each area. The second, uh, interview, which was a, a bit different, uh, related to, um, how I would see myself as a board member working, uh, with the state. Because at that time, the governor was also a part of that, uh, decision process. And again, um, experience was helpful, but, uh, just understanding, uh, the role that, that the State Board of Education, um, has in terms of, um, uh, partnering with Baltimore City Schools and the accountability role. So those are, those are the ways that I really prepared. My biggest thing was I really wanted folks to just understand the commitment, um, and the belief that I had in city schools and how, how I wanted to, to bring that for.
And I, I was gonna just add three things to that. Um, I'm coming from a different perspective, though. I'm coming from the, I've been in lots of interviews, so I'm just gonna like, just three things, uh, from seeing commissioner interviews.
We want the inside. We need the inside.
I would give a little, a little insight.
Thank you very much.
Little, little insight. So I think foundationally, again, understand the role. There is a big difference between governing and managing. Again, governance is about oversight. It's about accountability. It's like, are we doing the right thing? Your job is not to come in and do the stuff. You're to oversee the stuff and make sure it's being done right. So I would say related to that is, like, you know, don't come in trying to like fix stuff. And I don't mean it like harshly, but I think people have a mindset of, all right, I'm gonna come in here and just da-da-da-da. No, like anything commission is gonna fix, I would say is gonna take a multi-year project. You know, you could, you need time to educate yourself about the current landscape. So I would say, you know, don't come in trying to just fix everything at one time. Um, I'm gonna thank you, Dr. Brooks. And, um, you know, I would say related to that too, you know, just I've heard, some of the interviews I've heard, I'm like, okay, you sound, it sounds like they're interviewing superintendent, not commissioner. So just have the right frame of what role you're doing and what role you're signing up for. Um, second, I would just say, talk to people. I know that sounds kind of generic, but when I mean that, like, if a person is really interested in anybody that you have access to in the education sphere. If you got like a mom that's a teacher, or of course, you know, if you're a parent, like, really talk to me with the community. Really figure out, you know, what is, what do they want? What are they going on? Because again, as a board, you know, the board's role is to take the community concerns, hear them and put it into action. So you're supposed to be responsive to what folks are, you know, what, you know, parents and families want. And I think the third thing I would say is just being aware of current trends. You know, I, you know, do not come in being very generic, like, I love equity. Like, you know, that's, that's great. But, you know, I, you know, I, I would, you know, I would expect anybody in.
I'm sorry, I, we've all been on the, on the, those types of interviews. Yes. The buzzwords are not gonna cut it here in Baltimore, but that, not for this round. We want to, people to be committed to what's going on in real life. Um, yes, we can all read headliners, but we want a little bit more thoughtfulness around what you're really committed to. I, I get it. Totally get it.
And I'll add to that too, like, do some research. Like, you know, if you're interviewing, you should know what current is. You should know what the blueprint is. You should know what R3 is. Like, you know, so do the research to know what is currently going on in the district. So that's the kind of three things I would say.
Yeah, I, I, I think that all of that is super helpful and, and really great. Now, there were, that, those, I hope the people are taking notes or they are watching when they watch it on YouTube and play it back, then yes. There is one, I think, big last question that came through, which was what are, um, board commissioner conflicts? I E. Can I be a teacher and be on the board? Can I work for city government or for the mayor and work and be on the board? What, or what, or what would you consider a conflict for my personal work-life?
Um, I, I don't have an exhaustive list, but number one, you cannot be a teacher and be on the board. And that's in state law. However, if a teacher is interested in being a board member, if you, you know, you can, if you had a different job, you can do it, but you cannot do both. So that's one piece. Um, I would also say, uh, if you are, you know, for instance, have a business interest to these schools, right, like, uh, you know, you're a vendor or something like that, that's a huge conflict. So you wouldn't be able to do that. Um, so I would say generally, you know, the common sense things we think of conflicts, you know, you have a personal interest, but also commissioners do, you know, can recuse themselves on specific items if they have a specific con- conflict. So I would say the biggest conflict is, again, if you're a current employee of the district and/or I would say some kind of financial interest of the, um, Christian Chinia Brooks, if there's something I'm not thinking of, please, like, you, you know, let, let me know if I'm not missing anything. But that was the, that's the how, that's the two I would kind of think of that jumped to mind.
No, I was happy you said of the district because, um, we've had folks that are, that have had roles in education, but not within Baltimore City Schools. So you can't do that. You can't be a paid employee at the city schools and be, uh, the board member.
Yep, but Christian, if you could be, um, a, a, add a little more color, so like, um, so if someone is currently working in the mayor's office, would they be able to sort of serve on?
Yes. Okay. That's not a, that's not a conflict.
Yep, yep. Okay, great. Thank you.
Noel, Noel, you asking for yourself? No, I'm joking.
Oh, Lord. No, Dr. Brook, Dr. Brooks, go ahead. We have plenty of thing on, on the plate. If the plate is full, it is, we are good. I.
Just want to be clear, this is Dr. Brooks. She's not asking for me either. So I just wanted that to be on the record. She is not asking for Dr. Deborah Y. Brooks either.
We would totally love to have you, but I understand. I understand.
Dr. Deborah Y. Brooks, Brooks has spoken. So there you go. We are not, therefore, we are, we are in kind asking for other, uh, people and in the, a possible agency, but no, not for anyone im- immediately, um, on that, that team. So yes, thank you for clarifying because I know a lot of people like, well, can I do it? Or if I'm a teacher, or if I work, you know, for the city, or if I work for the district, can I be on the school board? And I think that that's also good. Any last quick words of wisdom before, um, we just share really quickly, um, like this, a presentation on our end about like the mayor's expectations and sort of how this process is gonna go for the people?
Uh, just that, um, just do it. Just apply. Um, um, no one's coming to save us. So why not you? Why can't you be a part of it? Why won't you just believe in everything that you've learned and been through and say, you know what, I'm gonna apply it in this place? So I, I'd say, come on, we are waiting for you and we need all the help we can get. So thank you.
I love it. And I'd like to add to that, that you will end up, um, making and having, uh, nine wonderful new friends and colleagues. Um, because, you know, you, you talked about, you know, how to manage time and the amount of, of work that, that commitment is. But there is also time, of course, there is some time for fun, I'm gonna say that word, but there is also the development of some strong relationships and people who have been on the board and have left, uh, remain, uh, folks that are resources and, 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 uh, friends and good relations with you. So I would say do it, please.
Oh, I, I love to hear that. And the encouragement is needed for those who may be hesitant. They're saying, and my new phrase that I've been saying to all the people, I was like, if you qualify, you must apply. That's it. If you qualify, you must apply. I don't want to hear no excuses. Stop it. Because everywhere else and every conversation over crab legs, y'all want to talk about the school system? You have all these suggestions. Come, come on over. Bring the talent on over. So we're just looking for that to happen. So really quickly, um, just to sort of wrap this, this all up, um, I'm just gonna go over sort of next steps where we are and just kind of all the things that would just be important for anyone that is looking, um, to, um, be a part of the board of school commissioners. All right, so really quick, in a nutshell, you, the requirement from MLCFS, from mayor's office, from everyone, you have to be at least eighteen years old. You have to be a Baltimore City resident. That's super important because we don't want anyone to sort of try to get around that. You have to be a city resident, living, your primary residence is in the city. Now, make, underscoring that. Any questions about it? Please contact any of us and we'll be able to clarify what that means. All right? Qualifications, again, we went over this, but this is just in a nutshell. Um, organizational management, at least four commissioners possesses knowledge and expertise um, concerning the successful administration of a large business, nonprofit or governmental entity. Your education, at least three commissioners have to have this, possess knowledge and expertise concerning education. Um, and parent of child in Baltimore City Public Schools, at least one commissioner. Don't forget, special education, at least another one commissioner possesses great knowledge or of or have expertise in education of children with disabilities. Um, and this knowledge or experience may be derived from being a parent of a child with a disability as well. So these are just the big, big nuggets you really have to take away from this, all right? All right, experience, your mayoral considerations, again, the. All right, experience, your mayoral considerations. Again, these are the considerations. Experience building partnerships and or community engagement, commitment to Baltimore City Public Schools, collaborative willingness to embrace diverse perspectives, courageous leadership, to what, to Dr. Brooks's point, um, and experience with fiscal complexities and organizational oversight. Knowledge of Baltimore City Public Schools, again, that point was underscored this evening. Don't just come in, just coming in, know some things. Commitment to equity, attended Baltimore City Public Schools, has a child or children in Baltimore City Public Schools, has previous board experience and or board training, student government or leadership associations count, because remember, eighteen or older, okay? Let's, let's make that consideration for our younger, young adults in Baltimore City and brings a unique perspective to the school board. All things underlined and things that we discussed this evening. So applications are open now and they are open through October thirty-first. Okay, the application is then reviewed by the mayor's office of children and family success. That is M O C F S. That is myself, my team, um, and under leadership of our executive director, Deborah Y. Brooks. Um, and then we go ahead and send the top scoring candidates to the community panel for interviews. Uh, the community panel then recommends a finalist or one finalist or more, and the finalists all have one-on-one interviews with Mayor Scott. The mayor then makes his appointment decision or decisions, all right? And just to, just, this is just a, a list of the representatives from the following organizations, make up the community panel. And what we strive to do is to have folks from different community organizations that represent, again, those pieces of our city that, that need to be represented. So we have Fund for Educational Excellence, Maryland Alliance of Public Charter Schools, P T A Council of Baltimore City, Disability Rights Maryland, the B T U, um, A F S C M E, as most people, um, know as the acronym, but it's American Feder- Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Baltimore Family Alliance, um, A S C B C, uh, Parent and Community Advisory Board, Baltimore City Council, Education, Workforce and Youth Committee, American Civil Liberties Union, and the Baltimore City Public School Administrators and Supervisors Association. So we do have folks that represent, um, all of these organizations that, um, are part of our community panel, um, finalists, um, community panel for our finalists to go to. Okay, and that, that's kind of like the big sort of nutshell, um, the nuggets that we feel like we should kind of like take away. And all of this information will be available on our site, on the, um, Be More Children site. It will also be available directly on Mayor Scott's site. We'll update all the information. We'll also have this recording available on, um, on the site for you to look at, at your leisure. Um, and I do believe that all, us, all of our commissioners, the ones that were here this, this evening, including Christian, all of our information, emails are on the Baltimore City Public School website for them. And then it's also on the M O C F S website, bemorechildren.com for us as well. Also follow us on Instagram, on Be More Children, on Twitter, same handle. Um, and we'll continue to keep everyone updated, um, through the process. But if you have additional questions that you felt like, oh, you know, I really wanted to ask, but I didn't get a chance to, or I want to have maybe a one-on-one conversation, I am putting Dr. Brooks out there to say that yes, he will be more than happy to answer any additional questions for any potential candidates as well as, um, Commissioner Chinia, who also has a wealth of knowledge. Um, and you can email them. I'm sure that they'd be happy to just see, um, all of you folks who are eager to join and be a part of this super, super important group. Um, and, um, there was a question of, oh, another question, which knowledge area are you seeking to fill for this round? I did want to answer that question. Christian, for the, for the, which particular knowledge area we're looking for in particular? And that also was, um, I'm going to be updated based on our, uh, just new appointment of, uh, Commissioner Coy. So, and that'll be on our website as well.
I would say, um, mostly, uh, management and K twelve, I think, would be a huge asset. Management and or K twelve experience.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, I want to thank, thank, thank you all again so much for joining us. Um, even with all things, you gotta be, be flexible. Sometimes technical difficulties, it gotta get you together, it'll gather you. Uh, but you gotta be flexible, because nothing is always gonna be as you expected. Just gotta go with it. Thank you so much, Dr. Darrell Brooks, for, um, for, for your just insight, your really, really great words to encourage folks and being super honest about the role. Thank you so much, Christian, for just being super informative and do- doing the work that you do to keep our board commissioners informed, keeping the mayor's office informed, keeping the people informed, our CEO, city schools informed. It's, it's quite a job that you do. Thank you so much to my partner in crime, um, Jamie Johnson, my youth and community engagement manager. Everyone else who was on the call, thank you so much. The M O C F S family, my people behind the scenes, my di- director of comms and my comms team, Christine and Abigail, y'all are awesome. Um, but thank you all so much. We hope that you got something out of this. And again, we're always available and we hope to see a lot of applications come in. If you qualify, you must apply. I would just leave y'all with that. All right? Thanks, everybody. Have a great one.
Thank you, and thank you to Chair.
Thank you all.
And to Chinia as well. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, Chinia, I think, I tried to let her back in. I think, you know, I think the junior commissioner must have got her. I think the junior commissioner. I tried to let her back in the chat, but thank you so much. Yes, um, Commissioner Chinia as well. All right, guys. Have a good one.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.